Eight thirty-seven from Geneva. If you guys come step up, they're gonna lead us in the pledge. If everybody'll stand up.
Scout salute. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
Thank you, guys. I'm from Geneva. Please give me your name and give me what school you go to.
I'm Colby and I go to Oviedo High School.
Oh, very nice. Come on, guys. One at a time, all of ya. And what badge are you here for?
Uh, citizenship and community.
Citizenship and community.
I'm Grady and I go to Geneva Elementary.
Nice. All of ya.
I'm Tyler and I go to Saint Luke's.
Nice. Good mix.
I'm Vincent and I go to Jackson Heights Middle School.
Very good.
I'm Ben. I go to Oviedo High School.
I'm Aiden. I go to Lawton Childs.
I'm Nathan. I go to Lawton Childs.
Well, thanks, guys, for taking the time to come out here and lead us in the pledge. We really appreciate it. You got a great meeting, 'cause it's short. There's not a lot on the agenda, so it's a nice time to come and put your citizenship badge and earn it there. Lars, do you need to step up for us? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. You doing well?
Looks a little light up there. Yes, peaceful. We like the part where you said "short," too. If you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we're so grateful that we can come together this evening in such a wonderful town. And we look forward to the leadership from these and the future elected officials that'll join soon. Father God, we ask your blessings and safety upon these Boy Scouts that are here tonight. We see a lot of future leaders here, and we just bless our families and, Lord, put your hand of protection over them. And tonight, Lord, we recognize one of our firefighters being promoted to a lieutenant position, that you would protect him and enable him to look after his men and women that serve under his command and protect them in everything they do, and bless his family. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Lars. Gonna call to order the city council meeting for August 1st here at City Hall. Our first order of business is ceremonial. It is a promotion recognition. So Lars, would you like us down there or up here? It's fine.
Yes, if you'd come down and join me. I've asked city council to help me present and promote Lawton Thompson to the rank of lieutenant, and his family's also gonna join us. Lawton was recently promoted to the rank of lieutenant. He has served us well for a number of years. There was a very competitive and difficult process that he went through, promotional process, and he was our top candidate out of six candidates. And we're just grateful that another hometown boy has come forward and has achieved this success. I think one day you'll be pinning a fire chief's badge on Lawton, quite honestly. I believe that to be true. So Deputy Mayor, if you agree this, and then we'll have his wife do the pinning.
Oviedo Fire Rescue Lieutenant Promotion Award is hereby presented to Lawton Thompson for exceptional performance and contribution in honorable service to the City of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department on this first day of August 2016. Signed by Lars White.
Congratulations. Hopefully, we're good today. Hold on, Lars. Congrats again. Now, we move on to item number two, approval of minutes. I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes for a July 18, 2016 special meeting and July 18th, the regular session.
So moved.
Kinda funny. Any comments?
Nope, looks good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. This is our section for public comment. This is for public comment on things that are not on the agenda today. If there's...I have no written notices, but if there's anybody who has public comment and has the time to step up. No public comment? I will now close with public comment. I will also tell our new lieutenant, please feel free to leave at your pleasure, sir, and take your family. It's okay. We have a consent agenda, and all the consent agendas, numbers four through eleven at this time. Consent agenda usually has just things that are, for the most part, either worked out already or have contracts. That's what most of these are. But I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any comments on anything?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. So approved. Moving on. We have no public hearings today, no first reading of ordinances. We just have one resolution. Resolution number 3252-16, site development order number 465-16, and architectural design order number 008-16 for shops at Sterling Creek, Public Supermarket Inc. I'll pass it on to the city manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The city council has requested to approve site development order number 46516 and architectural design order number 008-16 for the shops at Sterling Creek Development. The subject property is located on the south side of County Road 419 and on the west side of Sterling Creek Parkway. The total land area of the property is approximately 10 acres. The property is designated planned unit development on the city's feature land use map as well as the official zoning map. The property was originally the commercial tract within the Live Oak Reserve Planned Unit Development. The applicant proposes to develop the property in two phases. Phase one is what is being considered tonight, is a retail building of approximately 52,878 square feet, as well as associated infrastructure and landscaping, hardscaping. And some work will be done on the phase-two property, but the phase-two, the development of phase-two will occur with a separate site development order and architectural design order. The property has two access points on County Road 419, as well as one access point on Sterling Creek Parkway. There are some deviations to the land development code, as well as to the zoning in progress standards that are listed within the site development order and architectural development order. Those deviations have been reviewed by staff, and the staff has also reviewed the plans, and they found that the plans were compliant with the land development code, subject to the deviations, as well as the zoning in progress, and staff recommends approval of the site development order and the architectural design order. They do have one condition, that the applicant pay the amount of $25,500 into the tree fund for mitigation of removal of trees. That condition has already been included on the face of the site development order. Linda, if you could, could you pull up the graphics there? This is a picture of the property showing that the development, the phase-one development, will be on the western part of the property. You can see there with County Road 419 to the north and Sterling Creek to the east of this phase. Obviously, they're gonna create the connection to Sterling Creek, so there is some property, some development that will be occurring on that. And Linda, if we could go to the next page. This is a picture, this graphic shows the different facades and the different architectural treatments that the applicant has worked very closely with the staff to design a product that is consistent with the city's standards. And you can see the three masses that are proposed, as well as the different use of textured in materials, as well as color. I also call attention to the murals that are provided along certain facades. And Linda, if we could go one more there. This is a 3D rendering. You can see, you can actually see the three masses there, with the one mass in the front, the second mass behind, and then the third mass over to the right of the picture where the individual retails are. And there's also the depiction of the brick and the stone and the different colors that will be used with the retail building. And with that, Mr. Deputy Mayor has recommended that city council adopt resolution number
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here, and does he have a presentation? Figured so.
Good evening, council members. Michael Schnopps Tyler with law firm of Cobb, Cole, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue, Daytona Beach. Our project team's gonna be bringing over some project boards of the renderings, but just wanna start out by...
Flip them that way to the crowd. We've seen them, so we're good. Thanks.
Just wanna start off by thanking city staff for all their assistance on this project. Dr. Correa and her team have been fantastic to work with on this aspect of the development, on the brownfield redevelopment that you may know is ongoing at the site right now, that Publix has voluntarily agreed to clean up. We do have our full project team here this evening. I'm just gonna point them out to you all. Thomas Cowan from Publix was in transit. We haven't seen him here yet, so he may have gotten stuck in traffic in Orlando. But Jim Gendre was here from TKG Tailwinds Development. Brooke Stickler is our civil engineer with Kim Lee Horn. Barry Tillman is our construction and project manager. We have Scott Malinuck and Ashley Schaffner here from MBI. They're our architects. And last but not least, Stephanie Shealy with Little John. She's our traffic engineer. So if you do have any questions this evening, we have the full brain power of our team here. This is a project that is literally 20 years in the making, so it's very exciting to be here tonight. It's the last phase of the Live Oak project. That development agreement was signed in the 1990s, so it is really exciting to be here with a site development plan going forward. Mr. Cobb had mentioned that phase-one was about 52,000 square feet. About 46,000 of that will be the public supermarket, 1,700 square feet for another retail shop, which is the Publix Liquor Store, and then another 5,100 square feet for additional retail shops in that first phase building. There is a second phase that'll be coming in at a later date. With respect to the brownfield redevelopment, Publix has been moving forward with environmental cleanup efforts. The cattle dipping vat that was the source of the contamination has been removed. The impacted soil has been removed, and we've been working with city staff and the DEP on a permit for remediation of groundwater, which will be the next step there. Once that's done, we'll be able to move forward with the construction project. Just wanted to point out a couple of the deviations that are before you all tonight. I think that we've provided a nice suite of modifications and benefits to offset that. There are some deviations in the massing, screening, and fenestration standards. That's really done for safety and operational concerns. You can't put, you know, windows in certain areas where restrooms will be located or refrigerators and freezers are located, or where safes and offices are located. And so to mitigate for that, we've got some very nice murals that you can see up on the projections up there. They're multicolored. They're many, many feet wide, many, many feet tall, and they're along many of the facades of the buildings. We're also raising some parapets, structuring the building in a way so that a lot of the mechanical structures behind the building won't be visible from the street or the parking lot. The other deviation I just wanted to point out was a, there is a third sign that's gonna be out there, out at the site, in lieu of two. There is about 1,000 linear feet of frontage along 419, so that's being done to allow for visibility. We would add that there is an additional sign already out there for the Live Oak Reserve community, and we're keeping that in the project, in the property, with an easement going over to the community so that they can maintain their sign and keep it there, even though it's on the shopping center property. And we do have the poster boards here that show the materials that will be used on the buildings. So really, that's my presentation this evening. Like I said, we have the full team here, more than happy to answer any questions that you all have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael right now?
I just have one for Teresa. This building, and I think it does already, I think it was already answered in the package, this is the architectural standards that we are working on today. Is that correct?
Good evening. We have already architectural standards for commercial, so we are applying the standards that we have, and we are also applying the zoning progress. So here in the memo, we separated the deviations there with due to our current standards. The massing, for instance, is something that we already have, and then the standards that are deviating from the zoning progress.
Okay.
So we are applying both, yes.
Right, okay. I thought so. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's nothing else this time, I'll look to council for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 3252-16.
Second.
Councilman, yours?
Well, I think as our attorney friend said, this has been in the making for almost 20 years. I think...
Do you wanna slide those over so you can see it?
Yeah, I can see you guys. You know, since 1998, I think. You know, I've watched it all get built out there, Live Oak having lived out that way, live out that way. But, you know, this particular project is, I think, you know, we hear so many people out East talk about traffic issues and things of that nature, and having, you know, one Publix that, you know, Oviedo East and the eastern side of Seminole County's rural communities use, having this out there is gonna really take care of them, keep some traffic off 419, which, you know, we get a lot of complaints about. I know the Publix that we have out on Broadway and Riverside Landings is just completely overwhelmed. So to me, this was a great addition to the city, not to mention 150 new jobs, you know, and that is, that is our job to, you know, keep people working here and, you know, doing the, you know, most they can here, so there'll be a lot of people have some opportunity there. I just wanna commend you all. We usually get a lot of pushback when we try to design a building that complies to this zoning in progress. People usually don't like that, and you guys have hit a home run with this building. I mean, it looks better than the Publix that we have down the road, much better. And I think you've been pretty, pretty good with being sensitive to that. There are homes there, and you've shielded it and made it look nice, and I think everything's addressed. I live right next door to it, and I think it's great. I'm glad it's there, and I think it'll be successful. And Publix, really, you know, they're one of the few companies left that cares about communities. They care about people that work for them. So I'm just happy, all in all, I think you guys did a great job, and, you know, I didn't like that, you know, that cow dipping vat was there. You know, I'm an environmental guy. I don't like all that stuff. I don't even wanna hear it. Like, I don't like gas stations near my houses. You all know that story, you know, where we have that commercial property out in front of Riverside. They wanted to put a 20-bay gas station there many years ago. Before I was on council, I was not having any of that. And like, it was like a one-man gang to try to get rid of that, and we did, and we have something much better there now, so I hope that cleanup is going well out there. It'll be nice when you guys give us the green bell. Everything's clean, it's all gone. That'll make me happy, but great job by all. I'm really looking forward to it. Do you have a timeframe on when it all may be, you know, done? In a perfect world? Two weeks.
As soon as possible. We'll be moving forward with, for building permits, you know, as soon as we can, and, you know, we're trying to get through everything as quickly as possible. All of our mitigation is in place with the Water Management District...
Right.
...DEP and the Army Corps. We are...
You're rolling.
We're rolling.
All right, good. Well, thank you all. Appreciate it very much.
Councilman?
I agree with what Councilman Hankins said. Publix is gonna be welcomed out there. I've already heard from a lot of people that are very, very excited about that, because as he, as Councilman Hankins said, the other ones are so crowded that, especially the one down there on 419, is just unbelievable. You can hardly get through that anymore. It's just so crowded. Thank you for building a nice building and working with staff and having, meeting all those standards that we have. I know we can be kind of nitpicky, to put it nicely, but welcome to Oviedo, and we're very excited to have you. Thank you.
You know, I lived out in Live Oak. I was one of the, probably, I think, the eighth house that was built out there at the time. I'm out of there now. I live in another area of Oviedo. But, you know, I knew at the time when they were first putting it in, that area was zoned for, again, the word was Publix at the time. They were hoping for Publix, and it was a prime, a prime spot for a Publix itself versus other places, and it's, I'm glad to see that it's finally coming to fruition. And of course, helping to alleviate, it is very overcrowded. I know Publix, it's a good problem to have, so to speak, but it is a problem having that much throughput in a Publix. They struggle a bit, I know that, so it'll be nice to allow, to alleviate a little bit of that, and it's a slightly different product, and I think it'll be very well accepted out there in the area. As far as the deviations, you know, I really do appreciate, it's funny it brought up, I made a phone call to Brian to discuss just a minute about the zoning in progress. It's an interesting thing to people that don't understand this or don't really look at this and see, well, we've got these deviations. And I'm glad the way you presented it, you broke it up into the zoning in progress deviations and the deviations that, from our 2006 code, so that people can see the differentiation. Because there is a big difference. The code that I, that we're in progress in doing, I think we're learning as much, and we've learned from, I know staff has learned about that and the proposed changes that we're looking at in going through this process, because the design is really more of an urban, storefronts against the street, Oviedo on the park, Mitchell Hammock, along those kind of areas. Code change, and it doesn't really fit into every, it's, you know, every model that's out there. So it's something we're gonna have to talk about moving forward with our code when it comes back. We're gonna have those discussions. But I know staff, and I appreciate all the time and effort the staff put in, in helping you guys to kinda go through this process, and I appreciate the time and effort that you guys have put in, because as Councilman Hankins said, a lot of times, it's, this is a pain. I mean, this is zoning in progress. You don't even have this code adopted, per se, yet, and yet you're asking us to, you know, comply with it. And it is, there's a lot more to it. As you can point out, in your buildings, the amount of brick that's in there, the massings are different, but the other one is the murals and the art. I really appreciate that. As we start moving forward, again, we were talking, we had our art committee that's coming up, and we're talking about public art and how to, how we can use public art, but that type of public art also. It's private art. How do we have private art out there, looking good and being part of the community, and how do we implement that and have that out there? So this'll be another, again, it kind of falls into plan with the art initiative that we're looking to really get into and start working with by having these murals. And again, when one does it, somebody else may go, you know what? I wanna do it, too. That's a great idea. It makes the building look a heck of a lot nicer, and people like seeing nice things, shopping a nice thing, going to nice places. So I appreciate that. The other one is working with the HOA. You know, again, I've lived there for 13 years, and I know their thoughts on it, and working with them on the entranceway, and having, again, one of the deviations was really to help out the HOA and not put all the traffic on a Sterling Creek, by having that traffic come straight off of both ways and go out onto 419 directly versus everything coming in and out of Sterling Creek. Again, that was brought about because you guys were working with the HOA and trying to be compliant with them and help them work through their problems. So I appreciate that effort, and I appreciate the HOA working with you guys and bringing it forward in a nice manner and being able to get that worked out and help them out. Again, because it is a big community, and being part of that community, as well as Oviedo, works very well for you guys in the end, so I appreciate it all.
Okay, one more thing. You know, I just wanted to, just to address, you know, anybody that might have some concerns, you know, folks that live out in Live Oak, or, you know, people that are so used to seeing this land rural and, you know, trees and nothing developed on it, you know, we had the same thought out in Riverside, next door. You know, we have this marsh behind that commercial building where all of these exotic birds and all this nature is there, and it's still there, but having this, this strip center that we have up there with a gym and, you know, a convenience store, especially that's usually busy, I can tell you, just living two blocks out of it, it has caused absolutely no problem at all. So those that are worried about noise, I mean, Publix is obviously, it'll be a little bit, little bit busier, but, you know, we have access onto the main drag that goes into Riverside from this, but, and we have multiple different businesses in there, and it's really caused no problems. They're all good neighbors, and I can, you know, assure everybody, Publix will do the right thing there. So if you live out in Live Oak, I wouldn't worry about traffic or anything. We have had really no issue at all. And for the folks that live out in Chuliotur, Geneva, and all of these places, I mean, guys, you're gonna come into a beautiful facility now. You don't have to come into the traffic that you complain about, you know, Oviedo, all the time, which we're working to fix. So all in all, great, great job. Another good amenity for the city.
Well, and, you know, one more little thing, like I said, it's, you, you look at the, it's a 52,000 square feet. Again, Live Oak Reserve is, I think, 2,000 acres, 900 homes, 2,000 acres, 5,600 square feet. I believe it's about, all total, less than half the size of Riverside Landing down the block in terms of total square footages. That's going to be eventually there. That's, that could be there at one time. I think it's a great use of space, and again, we're an urban area. So as you say, it's the end of the urban area. We're still an urban area, but you look at the size and the use of that property, and I got a sanctuary across the street. Those are models, to me, if you look at them. And when you, when you first brought up about, when you started again, well, there's this area, I thought you were gonna say, well, Live Oak Reserve, because we didn't want, Riverside didn't want Live Oak Reserve at first, and was, you know, this is a terrible thing to institute Live Oak Reserve at the time.
There might have been some people. I love Live Oak. I love my community.
Well, half of Live Oak is now, half of Live Oak is now, the residents are former Riverside people, so it's a quite funny thing, but...
Now that Steve doesn't live in Live Oak anymore, I see Drew's out there. Can we get that gate unlocked so we can walk through, you know?
But, you know, it's, again, being 15 years that residents have been living there from the beginning, people have, those who have lived there that long know that I've been waiting for that Publix to be there, and have heard that word, Publix, and gone, I can't wait for it to be there. It'll be wonderful to be able to, especially those in phase-three, you know, hey, walk over the street and walk over the Publix. It'll be a wonderful amenity out there. But again, I appreciate the effort of working with staff. I know you guys put in a lot of hard time. I know staff put in a lot of hard time, and they've learned a lot that's gonna help us as we move this zoning in progress forward. So I really appreciate your effort, and I really appreciate staff's effort. I know they work very diligently on this, so thank you very much.
Sure.
If nothing else, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? That's that. No discussion items on list?
So we're off to the city manager's report. Cobb?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I wanna give you some information about three events coming up in August. The first event is this weekend, this Saturday, August the 6th. It is the End of Summer Bash that we will be working with the Helpful Hands charity. It is a free concert. It'll be from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the, at Center Lake Park, at the amphitheater. There are two bands that will be playing. One is the 13th Floor Band, and the other one is Think Big, and so we're looking forward to that.
We had that event last year, too, didn't we?
We did. We had the event last year.
I get successful events, so I encourage everybody, if you get the chance, A, if you've never been, please jump out and see the place. The events are great, but this happened to be a very good event last year, End of Summer Event, and was very successful.
What date is that?
Saturday. It's this Saturday. Saturday. And in... And it is a fundraiser for Helpful Hands. They do raise monies there for their local charities.
And we're one of them. They give kids summer camps and other things here.
To our recreation scholarships.
Yes, very much so.
Last Thursday, we had Food Truck Thursday, which was very good, a lot of good food, and we had good weather. We were all excited about that. I wanted to let you know that August Food Truck Thursday is going to be August 25th from 5:00 to 9:00 at Center Lake Park. And then the very next day, Friday, August the 26th, from 6:00 to 11:00, we will be having Viva Oviedo.
Viva Oviedo.
It is a celebration of Latin music and culture. I believe it's, is it four or five bands?
Three bands.
Three bands. We'll have three different bands there performing that night. This is a ticketed event. Before August the 15th, the tickets are $15. Between the 15th and the day of the event, the tickets are $20. And then the day of the event, they'll be 25. We also have special VIP tickets, which will be $40. And they can all be, you can purchase the tickets at eventbrite.com, which has helped us on several other events as far as purchasing tickets. So I wanted to let you also know about those, that event as well. It looks like we're going to have a fun time in August, just as we...
Get your salsa dancing ready, okay? A little salsa dancing.
September and October are also going to have a number of events as well, but it's a little early for them to bring those up. So we'll bring those up at a few other meetings. So that's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lonnie, Mr. Group, is there anything that you have this evening?
Nothing for the good of the order this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, sir. Let's see, the order tonight will be Councilman Drago. It's all yours.
No report tonight.
Wow. I've got just a couple of quick things. One is to, one of those events, the comedy tour event was fantastic. If you've never been to any of these events, I got to tell you, being out for $15, a night out, local, you can go to a place, hear some comedians, or hear some music, have some fun, and be home in 5, 10 minutes. It's a really fantastic time. I encourage you to check it out if you haven't had the opportunity. I went to the second comedy, but I heard everybody at the first one enjoyed it, told us, "You gotta go." We went to the second one. It was phenomenal. Looking forward to all the events that are upcoming as we move forward. So I encourage, again, as these keep coming up, please look at them. They're quite fun. There's a chamber meeting this Thursday with Congressman Micah, who's going to be giving an update. So looking forward to that. We have the farmer's market this Saturday. Remember, 12 o'clock, the alarm goes off, so... Was it?
4:35.
No way. That is crazy, Lawrence. Five years. Wow. That is absolut, five, I can't even believe that. It's been five years. Wow. And you still don't have, like, all gray hair or anything? I'm shocked.
I'm black hair.
That is, wow, five years. I really, I like, I'm thinking of, like, it just, yesterday you said, "Oh, we're celebrating our second anniversary." I can't believe five years have gone by. Wow. And the grand, I went to the grand opening of the Memory Lane Cottage over on Oviedo Boulevard last week. It's a great facility. It'll be, again, another addition of a new type of facility of care inside Oviedo, right here, close by. Wonderful, beautiful facility, but it offers another level of care for the community. That'll be very welcome and very well received. That's all I have, Councilman.
Just two quick things. I just want to piggyback on Mr. Cobb's events and give Mr. Bolware some props. In September, Drew was able to land in our very own amphitheater, American Idol winner, Scotty McCreery. He won American Idol. Drew, what date is that? September?
September, oh, it's almost due to, it's September the 10th.
September the 10th. So, you know, Oviedo is, you know, we've had a Grammy winner here when we had Jason Crabbe. Now we have an American Idol winner, so our amphitheater is becoming quite the place to come and perform. And we also are going to have an interview with a company who has, you know, deep ties to the entertainment industry. They've reached out to all of us, and we're going to talk to them a little bit about, you know, bringing some other stuff out there. So who'd ever thought an American Idol winner here in Oviedo?
Come on, do you remember the first concert we had here over at Shane Kelly Park?
Yes, I do. Yes, and it rained, and it rained, and it rained, and it rained.
But we had good performers. It was great performers, actually.
We had Mandisa. She's from American Idol. And we had Jake Owen and all these. But I'll never forget that it just kept raining.
It just poured.
It was ridiculous. It just kept raining. That was the day that Oviedo also set a Guinness World Records for the most blood pressures taken in an eight-hour period.
Yep, so we were records, yep.
And after we had that, we all had to run to the doctor. That was bad, you know? So yes, the, that's a good one, Drew. I have to tell you, Mr. Bolware stays under the radar, but he has been acting as not only our awesome parks director, but booking all of these bands, and he's become quite good at it. And we are trying to fill a position to do that, but, you know, something tells me the position may already be right here and to being done well. How do you top what he's done? So good job, Drew. The other thing, what's our next meeting, like, the 15th?
Yes, sir.
So I just want to say that August 12th, I believe, is the end of our qualifying. I see some of our candidates out there. I see Tim Beamer and Tommy Minton, and Megan Sladak is here. And I don't see Pollak. I see Jack Mannion is here. So I just want to wish all you guys, now the fun starts, once the qualifying comes. So it gets a little intense after that, but, you know, I know all of us up here wish you all the best. Glad it's your turn this year, not ours. Just go out there and walk and have fun, and if you need anything from any of us, we're all here. So there's two, there's two big voids to fill in these two up here who I've sat for for a long time. These are really good people who I'm going to miss. They have done an amazing job, and it's just kind of hard now that they'll be a qualifying, and you look down, but we got some awesome people out there that I think are very capable to come up here and do the right thing. Ask a lot of questions, you know, this isn't, you don't have to be perfect. We've all been there, but I just want to wish you all good luck out of here tonight. It gets a little rough now these next couple of months, you know, but good luck.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. All righty, one more thing. As we saw, there was a letter for Seminole County sending to the DEO related to the development in Orange County. Oh, yeah. Just want to have a quick discussion about that to make sure we're all on the same plan. I know Brian had said, I talked to him, and the councilman just said he spoke also with him today, about piggybacking with Seminole County on this effort and that we would give them our letter and then the, what else?
Our talking points.
The talking points that Deborah Pierre did so well speaking of. Give those to Seminole County to include in their package of information. Basically, we really don't have legal standing in this effort, so it really makes more sense for us to go hand in hand with Seminole County and become part of their effort moving forward and form a little duo versus putting something out ourselves and not really having anything to show for the effort. Is there anything, anything you need to add, Brian, or anything you need from us?
Yeah, you've given a very good Reader's Digest version of it, that we've been advised by the state DEO that our best, our best option is to piggyback with the county. The county is considered an affected party. The city is not. And so to, the best advice they said was to assist the county and to make sure that our concerns were included in the county. I have a, have a meeting with the county manager on Friday and plan to speak at length with her on that, so...
Because they have, they're getting their stuff on the 10th, I think you said, right?
They have a meeting on, I believe it's the 9th.
The 9th they have a meeting, so they're going to have all their stuff ready for the 10th.
Right.
Because they believe everything has to be up there by the 12th. So they're making sure that, from there, maybe on the 9th, everything's put together, packaged, and ready to go on the 10th. But I believe, like I said, you know, that's, that seems to be our best effort. Both staff and Brian have this under control, and Lonnie looking out for us and making sure that our efforts are being directed in the right way. I just, like I said, we saw the email come through. I just want to make sure we all knew what was going on. I didn't have any questions about it going forward.
You know, at the, at the very least, you know, and I've talked to Bob Delary a couple of times on this, and I think he spoke very well at that meeting. You know, it's always tough when you have these big projects to approve before you when you sit as an elected official. What was very disheartening to me is that, you know, Bob brought up, "Hey, we need to sit down and carefully look at the transportation network down there, and how we're not an affected party kind of cracks me up." You know, we have 4,000 houses going in just to the south of Oviedo, which, you know, but some of their commissioners in the paper, they have no qualms about throwing bombs at our commissioners in Seminole County when all they asked for was to sit down and come up with something, you know, workable to at least, if they are going to build this, to contain the traffic down there. But I won't use names, but, you know, I watched that whole thing till 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, and, you know, I have to give Delary a lot of credit. He tried to, you know, do the right thing, and they just didn't want to hear it. So hopefully, we could at least have, you know, a sit-down with them. You know, guys, you are affecting, you know, the community as we know it, and what can we do to lessen the effect of it? But I, I'll keep my fingers crossed, but certainly I agree. We need to get on that letter and do what we can, so...
Anything from Councilman Britton? Oh, he's not here.